Filling in as Vice Chair for our Chair, David Magnner. All right, Ms. Howell, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Schilling. Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mayor Anderson. Ms. Shulis.
Here.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Pape.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
All right, if you will stand with me for the prayer and pledge. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the privilege and responsibility to serve the city of Fairview. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we deliberate and make decisions that will impact the lives of our citizens. May we always strive to be just, fair, and compassionate in our actions. Lord, unite our hearts and minds in a spirit of cooperation and understanding. Forgive our sins and guide us to make decisions that reflect your will and honor your name. We ask this in your name. Amen. All right, approval of the agenda is the next item for tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Right, Kelly and Pape, Ms. Howell, will you call the vote?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling. Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Shulis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
All right, and in the absence of any citizens' comments tonight, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of the minutes from the special meeting on May 13th of 2025. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Right, Pape Williams. Ms. Howell, if you'll call the vote.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling. Ms. Shulis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Right, next item on the agenda, we do have one item for old business. Number one, PC Resolution PC 2325 Revised Master Development Plan. Chester Road Townhomes, MAP 42, Parcel 142. Current zoning RM8. Property owner Phillips Builder. Mr. Greer, if you want to give us your staff report.
This was before you last month, it was deferred to tonight. Kim Lee Horn has submitted on behalf of Phillips Builders a revised master development plan for the Chester Road Townhomes development. The project is a multi-family residential development that consists of 124 townhomes, private rights-of-way, stormwater infrastructure, and open space. The summary of the revisions, the Chester Road Townhomes Master Development Plan was approved by the Fairview Planning Commission at the February 13th, 2024 meeting. The residential development plan for Chester Road Townhomes was approved at the November 12th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. The proposed revisions to the master development plan are summarized in the table below in your staff report. The approved plan had 114 units. The revised plan has 124 units. The approved plan had a mixture of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. The revised plan has exclusively two-bedroom units. The approved plan had surface parking, driveway spaces, and garage spaces. The revised plan only has surface parking. The impervious area in the approved plan was 10.31 acres. The revised plan is 10.64 acres. And the pervious area in the master plan was 5.23 acres, and the revised plan is 5.04. This property is zoned RM8. The Fairview Forward 2040 Plan designates the parcel as Legacy Residential Medium. RM8 is not listed within residential medium, but it was zoned that way. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the revised Chester Road Townhomes Master Development Plan to construct 124 townhomes, three private roads, two detention ponds, and all necessary stormwater infrastructure and water and sewer infrastructure as resubmitted on May 23rd, 25, along with a condition of approval in the resolution that detention ponds must be fenced.
Thank you.
There is a representative tonight to answer any questions you may have.
All right, please step forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, John Richard Patterson, 4031 Aspen Grove Drive, Franklin. I'm with Kim Lee Horn, civil engineer on the development. And just to add some color to the staff report, because I know there was some confusion.
Excuse me, Mr. Richard. Ms. Shulis, point of order, we need a motion to begin discussion.
Sure.
Sorry.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Do I have a first?
Motion to approve.
You?
Second.
Second, all right. Are we good now to?
Is there been a first and a second?
Mm-hmm. Ms. Schilling. Okay. All right, open for discussion.
I'm gonna go.
Yep, go ahead.
Awesome, I just wanted to add some color. So, we've had the approved master development plan, we were going through with engineering documents. In the meantime, the developer is friendly with all the other developers that are currently building residential in the area, and started doing his market research on their product type versus his, and trying to figure out where the gaps were and what fit best. And so, the leaning towards the two bedrooms seemed to better fit the gap. And so, we were able to basically not change the site plan and accommodate 10 additional units. Accommodate the additional visitor parking that came along with removing the driveways and replacing with surface parking with minimal impact to the green space of the site or the site plan. And so, just wanted to provide some color on why we were coming in for the revision.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The difference, I, thanks for putting that up, the differences between the old and the new. In the new version, I noticed that the Phase 1 and 2 has changed somewhat with that planned southeast detention pond now being part of Phase 2. Was there a specific reason for that in not keeping it in Phase 1?
No, it'll be built in Phase 1. The phasing line is more so for the units themselves. And so, the ponds will be installed as necessary to service the site.
Okay.
That is a good catch, though.
We've had a lot of issues with stormwater runoff, especially because there's a creek right there. So, it's good that you said it would be in Phase 1, because that was my concern, was that it should be, and if it needed to be a condition of approval.
I'm not sure that's what he said. I think what he said, he said yes, and then he said they would be built to service as the projects. You may want to ask him to clarify that, and that may be a condition that you should consider, because I didn't hear that exactly.
Sure.
I think it was more of an ambiguous answer.
We will build it with Phase 1.
Okay.
And so, I would make that a condition, that it be built with Phase 1, because that's not what the phasing plan shows.
Sure. Okay.
We accept that.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, could you just clarify, again, I'm sorry. You guys went from a mixture of three bedrooms, two bedrooms, to now only two-bedroom townhomes? And then you increased the number of two bedrooms, and you increased the number of parking spaces? And you're justifying that because the surrounding areas were similar? You said that they did some type of research on that, that was the reason why you wanted to make those changes?
The developer was doing market research to figure out what product type is missing. So, if you build all three bedrooms, if someone's looking for a two-bedroom, they won't have that option. And so, what he was saying, being constructed right now or planned, was leaned him towards making the decision of going heavy on the two bedrooms.
Yeah, I noticed that, because you had more three bedrooms last time.
Right, there's none this time. It's all two-bed. Just a different product type.
Yeah, but additional houses for the two-bedroom and additional parkings for the two-bedrooms.
Yes, so the max density that we could build is 124. And so, with the three-bedroom units, they take up a little more space, right? They're larger units, and so, when we decreased, or when we removed the threes and replaced them with two, we were able to fit more units in the same building footprints, if that makes sense. So, we didn't really have to change the site plan to make it work.
Just increase the number of houses to be able to be built?
Correct.
Okay.
In the same footprint.
Thank you.
Anything outside of the residential layout change? Like, I know there was a lot of discussion about sidewalks down Chester and that sort of thing. Has any of that been altered?
No, sir. Everything's the same. The roads are in the exact same spot, the sidewalks are in the exact same spot. The revisions were unit count and driveways to on-street parking.
Then it would be appropriate to move, to vote?
I would like to add. You know, I just go back to the history of this project. It originally came to us with a specific vision in mind, especially being such a crucial piece in the center of town and how it can play into everything. It had more of a community feel to it. And I just, it's sad to see that that has gone to the wayside and that, you know, any sense of personal property, I guess, for the people who might one day live there, is kind of gone with no driveways, no grass in front of the front doors at all, just a parking lot and a bunch of two-family, two-bedroom townhouses, apartments, whatever you want to call it. I just, from my perspective, from my opinion, you have an approval to build a specific design that we went against the 2040 Plan and what it suggested should be in that area, because we were sold on that vision. And I hate to use the term bait and switch, but it certainly feels like that in this situation.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, point of order, do I, so for the condition of approval, do I need to make a motion?
There's been a motion. Second, for the main item, so you need to make a motion to amend the item and add the condition, and then we need to do a real call for that, and then we go back to the main item and vote on the main item as amended or not.
Super. All right, I make a motion to make an amendment to the current motion to add a condition of approval that despite what the phasing plan shows, that the detention ponds will be built in Phase 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? There's not discussion, we can call the roll.
All right, Ms. Howell, call the roll, please.
Ms. Shulis.
Now, we're voting on the condition, okay, aye. Sorry, thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
All right.
The item passes 7-0 as amended, so now we need to vote on the item as amended. The amendment passes 7-0. Now, we need to vote on the main item as amended.
All right, Ms. Howell, you'll call the vote.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
No.
Ms. Schilling. Ms. Williams.
No.
Ms. Shulis.
No.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
Mr. Pape.
No.
Mr. King.
No.
All right, the motion fails, 0 to 7. Moving on to new business item, PC Resolution PC 2525. Site Development Plan Laystar, 14.76 acres, MAP 23, Parcel 53.01. Current zoning IR Industrial Restrictive. Property owner MKHTN LLC. All right, Mr. Greer, if you'll give us your staff report, please.
Ms. Corolla with T-Squared Engineering has submitted on behalf of Laystar a site plan to construct a 14,000-square-foot headquarters for Laystar, Inc. on property located on Fairview Boulevard, east of Brush Creek Road, and north of Lakeview Drive. The site plan also illustrates all required parking, stormwater, infrastructure, landscaping, and all necessary water and wastewater infrastructure. The parcel is zoned industrial restrictive, and the requested land use is manufacturing limited, which is a permitted use within the IR Zone District. The properties to the north are zoned RS15 and RS40. The property to the east is zoned RS40, and the properties to the south and west are zoned commercial general. The parcel contains 14.76 acres. However, the limits of disturbance for this project cover only 2.51 acres. This location of the proposed building and parking is at the southern portion of the parcel due to steep topography on the eastern and northern portions of the parcel. Additionally, there is a stream located along the eastern property boundary and two wet weather conveyances located in the northern portions of the parcel. Due to the topographic challenges and presence of the stream and wet weather conveyances, the development of this property is constrained to the area proposed for development. This site plan you've seen before. Laystar came in about a year ago, and they had a two-story building with a very similar site plan. They've now reduced it down to a one-story building. However, that footprint has increased from 10,000 square feet to 14,000 square feet. This increase in building size has transformed the building into a more rectangular design. The rectangular design, coupled with the existing power lines to the east, requires the proposed parking spaces to the west of the building to be shifted farther west. The parking lot has been shifted farther west, but the number and design of parking lot spaces remains the same. The road that encircles the building remains, but has changed design due to the rectangular shape of the building. The detention pond located to the northeast of the building remains, but has minor changes in shape and size as part of the proposed revisions. The owner is requesting two variances from provisions within the design review manual. They have requested a tree bank exception request and a above-ground stormwater detention request. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the Laystar, Inc. Revised Site Development Plan in order to construct a 14,000-square-foot headquarters for Laystar, Inc. on property located on Fairview Boulevard, east of Brush Creek Road, and north of Lakeview Drive, along with required parking, stormwater infrastructure, landscaping, all necessary water and wastewater infrastructure, and the two requested variances as resubmitted on May 21st, 2025. And those requested variances are listed in the PC Resolution 2525. There is a representative tonight to answer any questions you may have.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve to open up the discussion.
Make a motion to approve PC 2525.
Second.
Kelly McDonald. All right. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Allison Corolla with T-Square Engineering. We're located at 111 Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin, Tennessee. I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have. As Mr. Greer mentioned, this is, I would say, 95% similar to exactly what you saw about a year ago. The developer just came in with a varied building, I'm sorry, excuse me, and so because of that revised geometry, it relocated several of the parking spaces.
Any questions for Ms. Corolla, any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Ms. Howell, if you will call the vote, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling. Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Shulis.
Aye.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
All right, motion passes 7-0. Thank you. All right, next item is PC Resolution PC 2625. Rezoning Meadowview located at Zero, Kingwood Boulevard, MAP 42, Parcel 123. Current zoning is R20 with the proposed zoning of RS5. Property owner Land South LLC. Mr. Greer, if you'll give us your staff report, please.
Ms. Julie Berg, owner and applicant, is requesting approval of a rezoning from R20, One and Two Family Residential District, to RS5, Single Family Residential, for the entire 75.91 acres of the tract of land identified as Tax Map 42, Parcel 123, and located at the southern terminus of Kingwood Boulevard. The primary property to the north, the existing Kingwood Residential subdivision, is zoned R21 and Two Family Residential and Planned Overlay District. There is an additional lot located to the north that is zoned commercial general. The properties to the south, east, and west are all zoned RS40. All surrounding properties contain single-family residential land uses. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this tract of land as both New Residential Medium Neighborhood on the southern portion and Residential Transition on the northern portion. The New Residential Medium Neighborhood Classification notes the appropriate land uses are Single Family, Detached Residential, Single Family Attached Residential, Mixed Use Commercial Office, Multi-Family Residential, and Civic Institutional. The New Residential Medium Neighborhood Classification lists the RS40 and R20 with a PUD Zone Districts as appropriate for this property. The Residential Transition Classification for the northern piece of this property notes the appropriate land uses are Multi-Family Residential, Single Family Attached, Single Family Detached. The Residential Transition Classification lists the RS15, RS8, RS5, and RM8 Zone District with a PUD Overlay as appropriate zoning. The applicant provided the following reason for the rezoning request: to cluster houses and have a walking trail. Through conversations with the owner, the request to rezone the property to RS5 is to provide the opportunity to create smaller lots that can be grouped together within the areas of the property that are the least impacted by topography and streams. The topography and other environmentally sensitive areas of the property greatly reduce the areas that can be developed with minimal impact on the land. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission provide a negative recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to rezone all of the 75.91 acres of the property located at the southern terminus of Kingwood Boulevard, identified as Tax Map 42, Parcel 123, from the current zoning of R22 RS5. Due to the northern piece of this property would conform in the 2040 Plan with the requests of the applicant, but the southern portion of this property would not conform to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. There is a condition of approval that this rezoning will be placed on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Last Thursday night, the Board of Commissioners canceled the July 1st meeting. This is within the resolution, so we will need to amend this resolution to move the July 1st date to July 17th. The August 7th date for the second meeting to August 21st. For that condition, due to the public notification requirements.
Motion to approve.
Oh, okay. I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. King.
To make a motion to amend.
Before we open discussion, I'd recommend that we get the motion in good form. So, Mr. McDonald, I think that's exactly what I was thinking.
To change the language and the condition from Thursday, July 1st for the BOC meeting to, is it a Thursday, the 17th of July?
And the second date from August 7th to August 21st?
And the second hearing from August 7th to August 21st.
All right, Ms. Howell, if you'll call vote.
A second.
Sorry.
Second.
Super. All right, Ms. Schilling was the second on that. All right.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling. Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Shulis.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
All right, if you will state your name and address, please.
Julie Berg, 1250 Old Hillsborough Road, Franklin, Tennessee.
All right, and we are open for discussion.
Well, I had, I was unaware of this, but I have, there's 27 and a half acres down from this portion. I don't know how to get this to you. But my intent is to survey off the 27 and a half acres and not ask for it at all to be rezoned. So, that's what I was coming here to say. And I had Kim Lee Horn draw out that I don't want to do anything down there on the 27 and a half acres. I don't want it rezoned. I want to stay within the parameters of the Fairview Forward on the upper part of the property. And I've even cut back the lot size, so there's only 91 lots and they're clustered. And that leaves a lot of green, open space that you can walk along the creek and along the property. I don't know if you have this or if I can get this to you.
Mr. Greer, do you have what she's talking about?
I was just handed what she's talking about.
Okay, so it sounds to me, Mr. Greer, you told me if I'm wrong, this needs to be deferred, and then the application needs to be corrected by the applicant, and then needs to be put on a future Planning Commission agenda.
I.
It could be.
One second. What do you recommend? Because you haven't vetted this new plan.
Tonight, we are only here to discuss, should we rezon the entirety of the property to RS5?
So, ma'am, what I would recommend is, they can't take up what you have in front of you because it's not properly before this body, and so they may not approve your request. And so, if you don't want to risk getting denied, because then you won't be able to apply for a year, I would recommend that you ask for a deferral, so you can get your application in better form.
If I may add, just so, and feel free to ask questions if you're confused on any of this. of this.
I'm, I'm very confused.
But, but basically, what's in front of us tonight is to rezon this entire property. We don't have, like, I think that's great, what you're adding. Unfortunately, if we pass this tonight, that entire property would be rezoned to RS-5, and that would be that way regardless if you were the property owner or someone else did, and they would have the right to come in and build to that zoning. So you, if that is your intention, along with Mr. Carter, I would recommend that you request deferral and then get whatever it is you're wanting to do as far as dividing it and coming back with an additional request, because I can tell you, we've seen this property before, and as it stands right now, I would be a no.
What happened and why you saw this property before was because I didn't have anything to do with that. I was unaware of what they were drawing. I was unaware that they were drawing something that it was not zoned for. I was unaware that they were trying to build 40-foot retaining walls and 30-foot retaining walls.
Yes, ma'am.
I do not want to cross the creek at all.
And, and I believe that that's your intention.
And I gave, the only thing I handed to Ethan tonight was basically the same plan that I handed to him before. I just, I don't know procedurally what to do.
Sure, and I think Ethan could help, Mr. Greer could help you with that. If I, if I may give a little insight to it, the, the, the first agenda item that we had tonight is a, is a, is a great example of what happens once something has its zoning. It would be, it would not be in the best interest of Fairview to, as much as your intention sounds like that's what you want to do, and I believe you, but if something happened to where someone else got a hold of it and saw it differently, there would be no reason that they couldn't do that. So for those reasons, I would be a no.
Yes, sir, I, I understand. I understand. I guess my misstep in this whole thing was, I, I have already told the surveyor, there is a survey on this paid for by those home builders. I'm going to cut off the part that is across the creek down there. I don't even want to rezon. It does not need to be rezoned. It does not need to be touched at all. I guess coming in here, I didn't realize that, that that would be an issue at all. So if, I'd like to.
Mr. Greer, would it be possible after the meeting to maybe give her some guidance on what she's got in her head on her plans and maybe what her next steps would be?
I don't want to ask for any variances. I don't want to ask for any favors. I don't want to rezon something that I do not want rezoned. I want, it is, it is.
It's understood. I think what Mr. McDonald is trying to say is, even if the document you have was presented to us, I don't think that would change anything. If you want to consider dividing the parcel legally and then coming back at a future date to only request a rezon of that portion that is buildable, that would be a good solution.
Also, I'll jump in here too. Mr. Carter, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we can't legally rezon part of your property. That's the problem, and like, unless we do a PUD. You know, if you did a PUD, then we could potentially do that, but a PUD involves much more detailed submittal, so we can't rezon just part of the parcel. It has to be split first through a, a plating process. So you're doing the right thing talking to the surveyor, but that has to happen. We can't legally say we're only going to zone half of it. And to Vice Mayor McDonald's point, if we rezon the whole thing and something were to happen to you tomorrow and somebody sold the property, they would, they could come in and put that type of zoning on the entire thing. So we, we really need to, as a board, see that property subdivided before we can act on only zoning the part you want zoned. I don't know if that helps.
Okay, and to answer, what I handed, or what I submitted to Ethan was only a plan for the, the front part that's buildable. I never submitted anything for, I call it the back part, the part that we're, you know, that.
I, I understand, but.
So procedurally, is there any way I could just survey that off? Because I'm not, I never even included that in any kind of request for development. It was always off the table. I did, I wasn't told that I needed to survey it off first. I was in the process of doing that because I knew that's what needed to be done.
That's, that's possible, but it's not possible tonight, and you do not want, you do not want the planning commission voting on what is before them tonight. So what, what you need to ask for is for it to be deferred, and then you need to speak to Mr. Greer and your surveyor, so you get your applicant, you get your papers straight before this board sees it and votes on it.
Okay, because I'm not doing anything that has been done before that was shocking to me. I'm staying well within the boundaries and making, we have someone who wants to build nice, cute, livable cottages in a, in a, in a, it'll be nice.
What we're doing tonight has nothing to do with that previous application. We hear what you're saying. We're just legally stuck. Even if you submitted for half of it, it's one property, it's one parcel right now, so the zoning would go on to that entire parcel. It has to be subdivided first in order to, to, to do it the way, and unfortunately, what Mr. Carter is saying is correct. If, if you push forward and we say no, and the board says no, you'll be stuck for a year. It's just part of the ordinance, so, yeah.
I don't want to do that.
Yeah, no, we understand that, yeah.
No, I, I'm not pushy at all. That's why I'm kind of in this situation. But if, if there's some way I could survey it off and stay on the agenda to move it forward, I have a sewer availability letter and I have a time problem because these home builders kind of.
We, we can't change your application tonight.
Okay.
We can't, for many reasons, public notice being primary of those. You need to, you need to, you need to ask for a deferral, or they're going to be forced to vote on the application that's in front of them, and you're not going to like the vote, I don't think.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm asking for a deferral, for your advice.
I would say indefinitely too, so that way there's no, and that, all that means is that we're, if we, we have to put a timeframe on the deferral. So if we say a month, that might not be enough time for you to get everything you need in order. So if you say indefinitely and next week you find out, like, I could make next week, next month's meeting, you just have to apply your applicant, submit your application and you can be back on the agenda.
That's what I'd like to do, so.
Yeah.
I'll, I'm sure.
So just request to defer indefinitely until you bring it back in front of us. It's not, that's, it, it's nothing negative. All that's saying is that you don't know exactly how long you need before you'll be back in front of us with your resubmission. I promise you, that's the right thing to do.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to do that.
Okay.
And, and I am surveying it off, and I already put a call in to the surveyor.
Yeah.
Because there is a current survey. So, all right, you want me to go now, right? Maybe I'll see you next month when this part's surveyed off. That's hopefully what we can.
Thank you for your understanding.
Point of order, do we need to amend the current motion to?
No, one of you just needs to make a motion. A motion to defer would be a primary motion, so one of you can make a motion to defer indefinitely. It'd be seconded. If you pass it, then it will be deferred, and then we'll move on with our business.
Make a motion to defer indefinitely.
Second.
Callie, Pape. Ms. Howell, if you'll call the vote, please.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
All right, next item agenda, bonds and letters of credit, none tonight. Reports for discussion and information, and we'll start with city planning staff, Mr. Greer.
Mr. Carter does not typically have many items, but I am going to ask you and put you on the spot tonight. The, so the Board of Commissioners have appointments coming up for the planning commission. Ms. Williams, thank you for your time that you have served on the planning commission. We are sad to see you departing. We wish you your best in your future endeavors. But with that said, the Board of Commissioners will not be making appointments until July 17th due to their, the Board of Commissioners will not be making the appointments until July 17th due to their calendar. So we have a planning commission meeting prior to July 17th, on July 8th. The only other seat that expires prior to that is Ms. Shulist.
The planning commission meeting is on the 14th, right? Oh, did we change it to the 9th? July?
I think it's July 8th. I believe, 8th is the Tuesday, second Tuesday. And so it won't be until the following week that appointments occur. So that will leave us three members down for the July meeting. Wanted to verify that everyone else was available. We need five members to have a quorum that night to be able to discuss the items. If we do not have five members available, then we will need to cancel that meeting and potentially reschedule that for post the 17th. And then as far as who will run the meeting that night, since Ms. Shulist will not be here, Mr. Carter may have some advice on how we're going to operate that prior to, prior to beginning that meeting.
Present members will just need to elect a chair to chair that meeting. Unless the, well, you're the vice chair, so Mr. Manger won't be here, the vice chair won't be here, so the existing members will have to elect a chair to chair that meeting.
Are all of you available for the July 8th meeting?
I will be here.
Mr. McDonald, you will?
I will be here, yes.
Okay, Mr. Pape? Mr. Callie? Ms. Schilling? Mr. King? Perfect. We'll keep it on schedule then. We have a, I think we've got six items to address that night, so y'all will have a busy July 8th.
Good luck.
You sure you're going to be here? Just kidding.
I would, I would love to.
I saved that part till after I asked if you were going to be here. That is all I really have. We have received several applications for the new members. Look forward to the Board of Commissioners appointing them for next few years that we get to serve with them. So thank you all for your dedication and for taking the time to read all the information and dig into all of our staff reports.
Super. All right, city manager?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, city engineer?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, and city attorney?
I've spoken enough.
Fair enough. All right, roundtable from the planning commissioners. I'll start over yonder with Commissioner King.
Nothing for me tonight.
All right.
No, I just want to say it's, I want to thank the board. It's been a true honor these past few years to serve on this board, and I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the former vice mayor, Brandon Butler, who took time to train me and, and provided me with materials, and work is the reason why, not that I want to step away, but I hope that my departure will give somebody an opportunity to learn just as much as I did, so thank you guys, I'll miss you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, Ms. Schilling, okay. All right, Mr. Pape?
Ms. Williams, thank you so much for your service on, on the planning commission. Ethan, two, one quick question, how are we doing on the code? Can you give us a quick update on the code rewrite?
So I actually met with TPUDC today in my office. I think that we will have, we've been going through, we had a lot of comments received that we've been going through and filtering and getting everything pretty aligned. I think we'll have something for a public draft out by the end of the month or 1st of July, and should be early in July that we have a public meeting with TPUDC representatives to come in and address all of the changes with the public. And then at that point, it'll open up the 30-day window for public comment, and at that, after that conclusion, then it will come to the planning commission for votes and then to the Board of Commissioners for adoption.
Awesome, so we're still looking at probably early fall, hopefully September, October is to get it finalized 100% through everybody.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, great. The only other comment I'll make is the fact that now I'm hearing we have six items on July's agenda. I know legally we can do that, you know, I just get concerned when, if we have any significant items, that we don't have a full commission up here considering them. So that's just something I want everybody to kind of keep in mind in the future. If, if it looks like we're going to have a really light attendance and there's a fairly significant amount of things to discuss, that we, we may want to reschedule meetings in that case, but that's just my opinion, so thank you, everybody.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Chair. Just thank you, Ms. Williams, for all the years that you've been on the board. I think it's been a couple, right? It's been a pleasure serving with you and best of luck as you move on.
Mr. Callie?
Same thing, thank you, Ms. Williams, Ms. Shulist, and a big thank you to Ms. Shulist tonight for running a fine meeting.
Thank you. An update for me, again, Ms. Williams, thank you for your time. I know that this appointment has been enlightening, to say the least, as you learn more about what a planning commission does and what we're responsible for. I really enjoy it, so I'm, I'm sad to see you go, but I'm looking forward to hopefully being reappointed myself at the next meeting, but also seeing new faces. And thank you to everyone who allowed me to stumble through this as the chair. I had not had to do it yet in the two years as a vice chair, so it is quite fitting that it is the last meeting as vice chair, that I'm doing this. So thank you, everyone, and I will entertain a motion, a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.